Start out tonight with an invocation and Kathleen Alitis, please.
So God, we just thank you that things are going your way because you're in charge. So your kingdom come, your will be done in Grants Pass as it is in heaven. Amen.
Okay, please rise for this and take your caps off for a salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a ruling justice for all.
Okay, thank you all for attending tonight. We're going to open up the first two items. They're quasi judicial, item A and B on the agenda. At this time, I will open the public hearing to consider an application filed by the City of Grants Pass. The application is for sorry, guys, this is one of the first times I've done this, so I'm going to stumble through a little bit. We will begin the hearing with staff report, followed by a presentation by the applicant, statements by persons in favor of the application, statements by persons in opposition of the application, and opportunity for additional comments by the applicant and staff. After that has occurred, the public comment portion will be closed and the matter will be discussed and acted upon by the council. Is there anyone present who wishes to challenge the authority of the council to hear this matter? Normally, the City Attorney will explain that the council can proceed with the hearing and will state that the object actually, I wasn't supposed to read that, sorry. Do any counselors wish to abstain from participating in this hearing or declare a potential conflict of interest? Seeing none, are there any counselors who wish to disclose discussions, contacts, or other expertise information they have received prior to this meeting regarding the applications? Seeing none. In this hearing, the discussion, the decisions of the council will be based upon specific criteria which are set forth in the Development Code. All the testimony will apply in this case are not in the staff report. If you would like a copy of the report, please write that on a note to the city manager and one will be provided. It is important to remember, if you fail to raise an issue with enough detail to afford the council and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue, you will not be able to appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue. The hearing will now proceed with the report from staff, and I'm going to take a sidebar because I did forget to do a roll call. Kathleen?
Here.
Joel?
Here.
Rick?
Here.
Eric?
Here.
Rob?
Here.
Indra?
Here.
Victoria?
Here.
And myself is here, Clint. And I'm going to hand it over to Brad. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, members of the public. Bradley Clark, I'm with Community Development. We also have here tonight Mark Trinidad, who is our planning manager. And then, as you can see on the screen behind me, the city did tap a land use consultant to assist us with this. This is a fairly complex application. And we have Raul Warner here tonight, who's going to take over half the presentation. I'm just going to kind of give you a brief introduction and then we'll turn it over to Raul. Since this is your really first major land use application for several of you, I thought we'd start tonight by just highlighting for just two minutes a couple of things about what's happening. So under Oregon law, there's really, when we're talking about land use applications, we're really talking about two types. There's legislative types of land use and there's quasi judicial types. There's an entire body of law that kind of goes with those and talks about the two different types and what is required with both of those. Both of them are regulated both by Oregon statute as well as our Development Code. The one you have before you tonight is largely quasi judicial. And the main difference is, does the property, does the action that you're going to take tonight affect specific properties? Or, like legislative, is it more universal, if you will? Does it affect most of the properties within the city? So, for example, in a Development Code amendment, you know, that's an action that could affect the majority of properties or people within the city. Quasi judicial generally is a little more narrowed and focused in. So if you got a chance to read the packet tonight, you saw that we are talking about just 18 different tax lots that are affected by tonight's action. So Mayor Scherf, in his opening, kind of touched on a couple of key differences and important things with quasi judicial action. One is, is there any expertise communication? Another one, is there any conflicts of interest? So those are two very important things with quasi judicial. Another one that he mentioned is the criteria. Quasi judicial applications are very, very set by a set of criteria, and those are listed, and Raul's going to go over those. The last thing I would mention, the analogy that some land use attorneys have used for quasi judicial boards like yourself or like the Planning Commission, is that you are acting in a capacity sort of like a judge. So you might just, you know, kind of keep that in the back of your mind tonight as you're hearing this because that's really what a quasi judicial board is doing. You're reviewing very specific cases and you're hearing criteria and you're deciding they do meet that or they don't meet that. So those are a couple of quick things. We can touch more on that at a later time if you'd like. But I'm going to go just for the first few slides here, how we kind of got to where we are. So we're talking about two different types of land use applications tonight. One is a comprehensive plan amendment and another is a zoning map amendment. And it does relate to the council goals to facilitate sustainable and manageable growth as well as your economic development goal. So the zoning transition overlay is the tool that triggered really how we got here tonight. That was created in 2014 when the city council was reviewing the urban growth boundary. And there was significant acreage that was being added into the City of Grants Pass urban growth boundary. One of the issues that came up at that time was that we were unable to meet the 20-year housing target for just the addition of that land. So one of the tools that the city council approved back in 2014 was the zoning transition overlay, which helped to designate properties in different spots of the city that could have higher density zoning. And so that helped to increase the potential number of total residential units that could be built potentially over a 20-year period in the city. Without that, by just expanding the urban growth boundary, we couldn't hit that 20-year target. So that's kind of the background for how we got there. It's about 450 acres of land. It was, it increased the density anticipated with those lots was necessary in order to boost that overall density. So here's how it kind of looks on the ground. You can see there's a couple of spots. Here's the river. Let me see. I guess that's not there. So here's a river coming through our city, and so we have several that are on the north side and several that are on the south side. And these were the different pockets of what was called zoning transition overlay that had different zoning designations. So June 2022, there was a hearing by the city council on the middle housing code. You may be asking, why are we talking about the middle housing code? What's that got to do with the zoning transition overlay? What happened in the first draft of that middle housing code is that we included the zones that were higher density, that could have no, where single-family housing was prohibited. That was one of the things that the zoning transition overlay did is it prohibited single-family detached housing in a couple of zones. That raised significant concerns. There was a lot of people here in this room that raised those concerns and had opposition to the middle housing code amendment because of that. And so the council remanded that application back to the Planning Commission for them to review it again. Then in July, the next month, staff prepared two different memos for the council that looked at a number of different things. We talked with the Home Builders Association, talked with Girllets Engineering, who was involved with several of those applicants who had property where single-family housing was not going to be allowed anymore. And we basically took a deep dive in the GIS data about what does this mean? In August of 2022, there was a council workshop. There was a motion to proceed with a notice to all of those properties that I just showed you on the prior slide, the zoning transition overlay. They were notified that the council was moving towards removing the overlay altogether, just taking it out of the code, which would mean that they would go back to their original zoning, which means they could have single-family detached housing. So in October of 2022, those letters were sent to their 742 tax parcels to inform them of two different options. Option A was basically the default, saying, yes, you're in the zoning overlay, but there's really no action necessary for you at this time because your property is already built out. You have your house. We're just taking away where your zoning is going to go. Basically, match what you already have is what that did. So that was the vast majority of the 700 property owners fell into that category. So they really didn't need to get a hold of the city. There was no action needed. Option B was where we did request some kind of action from the property owner. And that is where they could hold on to that zoning transition overlay to zone, which would give them the opportunity to have higher intensity housing. So approximately 40 people responded to those letters that went out. We also got phone calls. There was front counter. There was visits, emails, and letters. So of those responses received, 11 owners covering about 20 acres requested to retain that higher density zoning on their property. Seven owners requested to revert, and then, as I mentioned, that really wasn't necessary. We were going to assume that anyway. But they, some of them just wanted to make sure. So the action then was to file an application to take that overlay completely out of the Development Code. That happened in '23. The Comp Plan Amendment affected 727 lots. The Zone Map Amendment affected all of them, which is the 753. So those that did want to have a, hold on to that higher intensity zone, the city council wanted to essentially incentivize that and say, hey, you know, we recognize that you thought that you had this higher density zone, so there is going to be no fee. If you are interested, you can continue to work with us and we will, as a city, run this process for you so that you do not, on your own, have to file a rezon application. So that was included in that letter that I mentioned, that they could, if they wanted to proceed, there would be no fee. The city would do most of the groundwork and then they would have the higher density, and higher density zoning. So at that point, then, we're basically at the point where we hired CSA Planning. In November, we held an open house for those option B owners who wanted to hold on to the zoning. And then in December, we had some follow-up with the cooperation agreements. This year, or I should say, last year, 2024, most of the work happened in terms of actually working with all of those property owners individually. Having them sign the forms, you know, answering their questions. Some did change their mind, and so even though initially we had 15 property owners interested, the, by July, I should say by December of 2024, we were down to the seven owners and the 18 tax lots that are in your packet tonight. And finally, for me, just two process clarifications. There are two separate land use actions, as I mentioned. One is the Comprehensive Plan Amendment, which changes that long-range plan designation on the property. And then the other is the Zoning Map Amendment, which changes the actual zoning district on the property. So those are the two types. With the exception of the Sat Earthweight property, that one, the Comprehensive Plan designation was the same. It stayed the same. Even though the zoning changed, the Comprehensive Plan didn't change. So theirs is the only property that where both actions are not applicable. So we do need two separate motions. If you decide to proceed tonight, it's important that there be two distinct motions made, and that will be mentioned by Raul in a later slide. So if you could come up now and Raul will kind of walk you through more of the specifics.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. I'm Raul Warner with CSA Planning. Our offices are at 4497 Brown Ridge Terrace in Medford, Oregon. Our firm was just engaged to help out the city with a final step in this whole ZTO update to the code. As Brad mentioned, the city had already made the decision at the time we were engaged to repeal the ZTO and then offer as an option to any property owners who really wanted to retain that zoning option that they had for that higher intensity to respond. We had an open house meeting in this room in December of 2023, right after, about a month and a half after the city council repealed the ZTO but offered that option out. There were folks that participated all the way from Massachusetts. We had a hybrid remote meeting and a lot of people were in this room, and we sat down and explained to them what the different zoning options were under the zoning that had just been provided by the council's action in October versus what they might have been able to get under the ZTO. The ZTO was essentially, for many years, just an option to property owners. It was sort of transition from county to the city for properties that wanted to go to urban levels of intensity. The ZTO provided that if they want to provide their own traffic analysis and show that there's adequate, you know, street capacity and water sewer capacity, then they could develop under the optional higher intensity ZTO. Or if they preferred, they could just go and develop under the previous more suburban level intensity. So if it was just two to four homes per acre, they were entitled to do that. Up until the point of time that the city completed a transportation system plan update. So that was why it was a transition overlay. While the state had concerns about the city providing adequate housing to meet the 20-year demand, it also had concerns that if the city went ahead and just rezoned all those properties immediately, that they needed to have a traffic study to support all of them at once. The city wasn't prepared to do that at that time. So they deferred out, the city deferred out, the traffic system plan update. I think it was updated. What year was that? It was 2018? More recent? Yeah.
2020.
2020. So the code operated as having the ZTO effectively become the actual zoning of the property at the time the transportation system plan was updated. And that was complete. So all of a sudden, property owners were saying that they're coming in wanting to develop under the more suburban or rural that they had before, and told that they weren't allowed to have single-family development anymore because now the zoning transition had transitioned. The overlay was now the zoning. And that caused a lot of alarm throughout the community. The Home Builders Association, Realtors, property owners came in en masse. And city council, you know, in reviewing that, recognized that the state had provided new options that had not been available when the ZTO was adopted. That's under that middle housing ordinance, which the city can adopt a local ordinance for that, or if they don't, then they can go straight to the state rules and apply them directly. So all of a sudden, if you had a single-family zone property, you could put a fourplex or duplex on them and have the higher density option. So the rationale behind removing the ZTO is, well, there's this other option available. Seems like most of the property owners' feedback or information is they don't want to be stuck with that mandatory minimum density where, you know, you're having to build 20 houses on your property or 20 units instead of five or six houses. So so the city decided just to repeal it, but offer the property owners who really wanted to have that that higher density, higher intensity urban zoning that they effectively had in place once the transportation system plan was adopted. That city would just restore that through a zone change process under this option B. So if you look at this, it's really a refinement of the map amendment that was done in October of 2023. The city did a citywide repeal of the ZTO, but said, we're not finished yet. We're going to provide an option for some owners to restore those, you know, if it makes sense. We'll have an application process for that. And so then we had the open house and we followed up. We contacted everybody who showed up. So are you sure you want to proceed with this? This is what it will mean for your property? And we prepared applications for actually more than you have in front of you. And we consolidated them all into one process so you could deal with it in a single hearing rather than have 13 or more hearings, you know, for each and every property. So that's how we are before you today. Every request here is something the property owners said that they wanted to have. The ones who weren't sure and decided to drop out, they're no longer part of the process. So you just have the 18 lots, I believe, that are in the final development. And went through the Planning Commission. There was, nobody showed up to object or otherwise. There was no public testimony. The Planning Commission adopted the recommendation to prove this unanimously, and it had support from every public agency that had returned comments. If you have any questions about any particular properties or process, I'd be happy to stand for those questions.
Thank you very much. Does anybody have any questions? Rob?
Yeah, I'm not sure if I follow the whole chronology. So basically, we're essentially finishing something potentially tonight that was essentially legislated 15 months ago or so. But is this, are these four property owners, are these seven property owners, have they essentially changed their mind? Or why did it take them so long to essentially jump on board with the offer that the city gave them?
So there was no opportunity ahead of the repeal of the ZTO for property owners to say, don't take the ZTO away from us. It was either do not respond and we'll remove the ZTO, or respond, which they did before it was even repealed. We had names of property owners who were interested in having it restored. But the option was that we're still, the city's still going to repeal the ZTO, but they're going to restore it as an option B for those who have any interest. And it turned out to be very few property owners citywide with interest there. Following up, there was a lot of time coordinating with the property owners. Some were hard to get in contact with again. Some had decided to list their properties for sale. And then we had some issues with dealing with the highway department on the traffic. And we kind of explained to them, well, you're okay with the removal of the ZTO from over 400 properties or 450 acres, 700, over 700 properties. And the highway department didn't provide a traffic reduction credit to the City of Grants Pass. So we don't really think the highway department should be asking for a full traffic study to restore just a few of the properties of the 700 and so tax lots. And ODOT agreed that, yeah, that sounds reasonable. So really, overall, counting all the properties that the ZTO was repealed from, netting out the ones that were stored, it has no significant impact on the traffic, street system, system wide.
So I'm not sure if you answered my question, but
Why did it take so long for them to, it took about six months to get the property owners after after we had had the initial hearing all in agreement. Some had called back and changed some things. So we're doing all of them at once. So kind of had to wait on the ones that were kind of not sure, just to lock it down. So we had a few drop out towards the end of the summer last year.
Okay, so this is then essentially the final round of all this. There's not going to be any more stragglers. No one else changing their mind. There's no other delays. This is the final round. Once, if we make a decision tonight, then we're essentially done with this subject.
It should wrap it up. There was some talk about having a second round, but that's been cut out now. So this was the window of opportunity for anyone who wanted to come in and get that ZTO level of zoning restored by the city done.
Thank you.
And then, did you have anything to add, Brad?
If I could, Raul, there's two, I think one or two slides after this one, there's the table. And I'm just thinking, listening to Counselor Pell's question, if that might help just clarify, if we could just show show, yeah, graphically, the properties that we're specifically talking about tonight, as well as, I think, just to add it to the public record that this is being shown.
Yeah, and then the format of the report just provides a narrative for each property and some context for the neighborhoods.
Kathleen had a question?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, is this only for the properties now mentioned? It's not going to affect other people's properties? Like, do, okay, so if people want this maximum density, do they have to put in applications from now on? Or this is just a one-time thing and it doesn't affect anybody else?
Yeah, this is the one-time cleanup of the option B that was provided by the city council to property owners. You have this opportunity to get that higher density back, participate now. Otherwise, if you want to change the zoning on your property in the future, you need to file an individual application as a property owner. We also, the scope of our services was to restore zoning equivalent to the ZTO. So there were some property owners who were asking for something else. Maybe they had been residential before and they're like, well, we think it would be great if it were commercial. And our response was, well, you'll have to file an application to rezon. It was never commercial in the first place, so that wasn't part of the, that wasn't the offer from the city, so.
Anybody else? Eric?
You might have already covered this, but I just wanted to make sure, that we make sure that all steps have been taken for individuals that maybe have a little bit of regret on their decision that they made? Or, I mean, is this the final say essentially? What, have we taken specific steps to make sure that it is their final decision to make?
Yeah, yes. Throughout the process, we've been contacting them and just reaffirming that they still want to move forward. So every step, you know, we had the open house and then we followed up and said, you sure you want to do this application? We explained, and sometimes we had to explain it several times to some of the property owners to understand exactly what their options were, and they had a lot of questions. And then when we're getting ready to actually get the formal application filed and initiated to get the Planning Commission, we contacted them all ahead again, and there were some changes even then. We refined the application and then initiated it. It went to Planning Commission. All the property owners and our neighbors got noticed as part of that process before the Planning Commission. And then everyone would have been re-noticed for the city council today.
Thanks. Does anybody else have questions? We're going to have, we'll have discussion later on, but this is for questions. Questions to staff. Victoria?
You said there was talk about a round two, but it was decided against. Could you elaborate on that a little bit for me? Did that
That's just in discussion with the planning staff. You know, we, there was option B, it was one time. If there was a lot of interest and there were many more property owners, we were thinking we may have to split it up into two rounds, especially for those who weren't quite sure and were trying to figure it out. We didn't want to hole up all the other property owners. But it really didn't pan out that way at the end.
Go ahead.
And people always come back later and say, oh, I really wished I would have done that or hadn't done that. If that were so after today, they could still go to the planning department and they could ask for an individual plan. department, and they could ask for an individual plan and come before and do it that way. I thought that's what you said. I just wanted to be sure that is what you said.
Well, a property owner may always file a request for a zone change. So the planning department would sit with them, and there's pre-application process to discuss how to proceed. And they might recommend that, you know, they think about hiring someone like me to help them with their application.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff? All right, thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
And at this time, we'll open to public comment on this matter only. Is there anybody that'd like to speak in favor of this application? Does anybody like to speak in opposition of this application? Yes, sir? Come on up. When you come to the podium, make sure the mic's on. State your name and where you live. And we're going to be discussing this topic at hand, correct?
Okay, and I'm also here for public comment.
Yeah, you know, this is for the judicial action.
I can revise and extend my remarks. Or can we have a Q and A? Or how does this work?
So basically, you put your hand up for a public comment in opposition of this application?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, then you can go ahead and state your name and where you live.
Christopher Nadeau, 7000 Monument Drive. I live in all three counties, both counties. I have a business in Ashland. I live in Medford, and I live here in Grants Pass, and also have a business here. Basically, really, all I want to do is thank all of you for your service. I come from a city called New York City, that you're all paid. So I get to complain in a different way. So I'm going to be as humble and as polite as possible. I think there's a stipend for a mayor, and then there's another one, city council president that gets to...
Are you going to be on topic?
The short of it, the short of this is, this is a horrible idea. You need flexibility. You need flexibility. You need multiple vendors. Everybody here looks like something out of the lower KKK. I'm trying to do events here with minorities to highlight that this is a diverse community, a hip-hop event, a T-shirt sales.
The topic at hand is whether we're going to appeal this overlay. Do you have comments about that?
It should be appealed. You're just touching the surface of the amount of revenues that can be raised here. Ashland has three different tax revenue sources. So this is a special kind of stupid, and I mean that humbly, because I have not done my job to educate you guys on what the hell's going on. Big cities don't operate like this.
Yeah, I think you're talking on the wrong topic, sir. So if you want to have a seat, you can come back for public comment.
Basically, you're asking about an amendment...
We need to proceed forward. And I just didn't see any of your topic being on topic here. So if you want to have a seat, you can come back for a public comment. That'd be great. Thank you very much.
Absolutely, yeah. And I just would close by saying that these don't help. There's no projections in revenue.
Yeah, thank you, sir, very much. Okay, public comment is now closed for this quasi-judicial topics. Is there, going to bring it back to, is there any discussion for council? You can start with discussion. You can, there's potential motions that are listed within that packet you have, so you can go forward with however you want to proceed. Victoria?
I would like to move to continue the item to a date certain, which would be our next meeting, and vote on it then. It could even be part of the consent agenda then.
There's a motion on the table. Is there a second? Eric? So the motion at hand is to table this topic to a date certain, which would be the next?
19th.
19th. 19th of February, correct, Victoria?
Yes.
Okay. Rob, discussion?
Why, Victoria?
So that all councilors felt that they had the full, felt that they were fully capable of voting on it with all knowledge and, yeah. So not to, yeah, that's why.
Any other discussion? Okay, we have a motion on the table to table this to date certain, February, again, 19th?
February 19th.
There was a second by Eric. Okay, if no more discussion, we'll go to a vote. Kathleen?
Yes.
No, sorry, didn't.
Yeah, let's table it.
Okay, Joel?
I'm ready to vote on it tonight, but if other people aren't, I'll go ahead and support it.
Rick?
I'm in favor of proceeding tonight. No?
Eric?
Yes.
Rob?
No.
Indra?
I think I understand it. I'm ready. But I think if even one counselor thinks they need more time to really learn the issue and study it, they should have more time. I vote yes.
Victoria?
Yes.
Okay, so the motion passed to table this to a date certain to February 19th. Since you have two items on, well, you will need a motion to do the same for the second item.
Just to clarify, there's no further presentation for the second?
No, they were lumped together, basically, but two different items.
Then I move to move the voting to February 19th for agenda item, legislative item B to February the 19th.
I second it.
Kathleen seconds. Sorry, Kathleen seconds. Any discussion? Okay, vote on the motion. Victoria?
Yes.
Indra?
Yes.
Rob?
No.
Eric?
Yes.
Rick?
No.
Joel?
Again, I'm ready to vote on it tonight, but if there's others that need more time, I think that's an important consideration. So I'll vote yes.
Yes.
Kathleen, yes. Okay, motion passed. So both items will be tabled for further discussion until February 19th. Okay, now we're going into council actions. And looks like I will hand it over to the man. Go for it.
Thank you, Mayor. So we have an ordinance for you tonight for your consideration. And this is an update to Grants Pass Municipal Code Title III, and it is adoption of Amendment One to the sewer system system development charges. Your subject in summary is this is to consider an ordinance to update sections of Title III system development charges and adopt Amendment One to the system development charge methodology. And it essentially just adds a classification of RV to the system development charge, or to the system development charges code. So as a little bit of background, Organ Revised Statutes authorizes local governments to establish system development charges. These are one-time fees on new development, paid at the time of development, to recover the costs of infrastructure for that development, what they consume of the development. So it's a little bit of a treatment plan. It's a little bit of a water line. And there's two components to that. And one is for infrastructure, which has already been built by the city, powered by developers, but by the system, which serve that development. And then there's an improvement fee, which is for improvements yet to be built. And again, they are paid at the time of development, and they are not ongoing charges. It is a one-time fee. And charges are relative to a single-family dwelling. So a single-family dwelling is a one. And the reason for that is that's the largest class of businesses that we kind of deal with. So again, key facts, they are a one-time charge, only at the time of development or redevelopment, and only if the redevelopment increases the impact of that development to the system. And the fees that are collected through SDCs can only be used for capital construction. That's very, very important. We cannot use system development charges for maintenance or for ongoing operations costs. We can only apply those to capital construction, and only for projects that are identified in our master plans, in our approved master plans. So in December of 2019, the city council adopted an updated methodology, and that was through ordinance 195773. Two months later, in February, they adopted a new SDC rate, and that was through ordinance 26890. And the reason for the delay between those two is council really looked hard at what that rate was. And even though the rate study showed that we could charge a much higher rate based on the investments that's already been made and the investments that needed to be made, they wanted to make sure that these SDCs didn't really interfere with businesses and the development of houses. And so they struggled with where to set that, and they set it at a significantly lower rate than where the SDC was legally entitled. The adopted rate also took into consideration home sizing. This was very new to our methodology. And what that did is it looked at the size of the home that's being constructed and said, "A smaller home has a smaller impact on the system, and therefore, we should charge it a lower rate." Same conversely with a regular-sized house and then a large house. And so we set that for a small, a medium, and a large-sized home. But it did not take RV parks into consideration, and it treated them similar to a mobile home park. It's a very similar setup, which is kind of treated it that way. A mobile home park pays a .64 of an ERU. An ERU is an equivalent residential unit. So one residential unit is essentially 20 fixtures in the sewer. We're going to talk about it a little bit more in a second, but that's kind of where we set that base rate at. If you do look at an RV, the fixtures in it are much smaller. There's fewer fixtures than maybe even in a mobile home. And so it did make sense to consider that. On September 4th of 2024, council did uphold an appeal, which related to Greenfield RV Resort, and did grant a reduction in system development charges from .64 to 0.5, based on evidence both from staff and from the applicant. Right behind that, in November 2025, Hidden Valley RV Park filed a similar appeal, which council also upheld. And at that time, we did start a revision to the code to implement that fee and get it adopted into the rate. However, that was a complicated, it just takes a long time, unfortunately. To update the SDC methodology, we worked with our rate consultant. We updated, and we presented, and it's in your packet, Amendment One to the sewer system SDC methodology. But then per Organ Revised Statutes, we have to publish that 90 days prior to adoption, which has been accomplished. And that notice was published in October of 2020, October 22nd of 2024. And the 90-day comment period ended in January of '25. No public comment was received. And as you can see from the submarine table, it does add RV space at the bottom of our table now as a class. And so any future developments can now be charged at 0.5 for an RV space. So to talk about the ERU just a little bit, an equivalent residential unit is a one. And again, we come back to single-family residential development is what primarily all cities see as their largest development. So when we're setting up our SDCs, we always kind of think of a house. And so that's why we have a one ERU, which is 20 fixtures. A fixture is any combination of sink, toilet, shower, hose bib, dishwasher, you name it. However, just because there's a sink, it doesn't mean that it's a one. That sink may actually be a five, depending on the size of the faucets that are installed. And so when you get into commercial, it gets a little bit more complicated. But for housing, it's either a one or some multiplier, .64 or 1.2 as a multiplier. So the SDC methodology is updated by ordinance and into the municipal code. The updates that we have before you do add the definition of RV space, but additionally, we updated the appeal methodology. What we found when we started looking at this is that the appeal methodology, you have SDCs for water, wastewater, stormwater, transportation, and parks. All the appeal methodologies were different from SDC to SDC, SDC. So we took this opportunity to make that methodology the same, to eliminate confusion between all of the SDCs. It didn't really change any of the timeframes. It just standardized them to make it easy. And then we moved it out of each individual SDC section to the front of the SDC section to make it very clear where that appeal process resided. The other code, or the other change that this code potentially would make, is when the code was adopted, Engineering News Record Construction Costs, ENR, was used as one of the inflationary indices for more than one of the SDCs. But the others use the Bureau of Labor and Statistics, going to get tongue-tied, as the indices. So what we're doing is standardizing the cost indices, so that we're only indexing those costs by one index. And it's the same one that we use for all of our other rates throughout the city, just making that standardized. There is no direct cost for adoption of this update. And in fact, costs for development of an RV space will be reduced for developers. And we do tentatively have the call to action tonight, but it can be deferred at your direction. We have met all of the requirements of ORS per noticing, and it is ready for your adoption. And with that, I would love to take any questions.
Any questions for staff? Yes, Joel?
So I was going to summarize what I think you said, Jason, and you can tell me if I'm correct or not. Okay, that's what my question is, am I correct or not? So what I see is we're standardizing the appeal process, and we're lowering the SDCs on RVs for RV parks, and everything else stays the same.
You are absolutely correct.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Rob?
And I'm assuming all RVs would then be the exact same rate, regardless of the small difference in size there could be.
Yeah, so this is specific to an RV space. It would be in an RV park development. But yes, sir.
Anyone else? No? Okay, thank you, Jason.
At this point, we'll open up for public comment on this topic. We are discussing the adoption of Amendment One for the SDC charges update to replace Title III system development charges in the City Grants Pass Municipal Code. Did you want to top topic on, any talk on this topic?
I have a question.
It's not question time. It's if you have a comment on this topic.
I have a comment. All I have is two pages that was given to me when I came in today. So I have a master's of science, but you need a PhD to understand this. And I've served on some boards, economic development boards with people...
So when we started the council, when we started the meeting, if you had any additional questions, you can write a note and give it to Karen, the clerk, and she can give it to the town manager, and we can basically get you some more information. But this is not the time or place for asking.
For enough copies for everybody in attendance in the future, so everybody knows what we're talking about.
Thank you very much. Does anybody else want to comment on this topic? All right, seeing none, thank you. Okay, bringing it back to council for discussion. Joel?
I don't want to cut discussion. If somebody needed to talk about something, I was going to go ahead and make the motion.
I think you've got a clear path.
Okay, I move to approve the ordinance. Am I on the right one? Adopting Amendment One to the 2019 system development charge update and replacing the Title III system development charges of the City of Grants Pass Municipal Code and have it read by title only, first reading.
Is there a second? Rob, second, thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll go into a vote. Victoria?
Yes.
Indra?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Unanimously passed.
An ordinance of the Council of the City of Grants Pass adopting Amendment One to the 2019 sewer system development charge update and replacing Title III system development charges of the City of Grants Pass Municipal Code.
All right, I will entertain another motion for second reading. Rick?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the ordinance adopting Amendment One to the 2019 system development charge update and replacing Title III system development charges of the City Grants Pass Municipal Code and have it read by title only, second reading.
Do we have a second? Rob, thank you. Any further discussion? Not seeing any, we'll go to a vote. Kathleen?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Indra?
Yes.
Victoria?
Yes.
Thank you. Unanimously passed.
An ordinance of the Council of the City of Grants Pass adopting Amendment One to the 2019 sewer system development charge update and replacing Title III system development charges of the City of Grants Pass Municipal Code.
Thank you. Next item would be resolution authorizing the city manager to execute task number 10 with West Yotes Association, Inc., for engineering design services for Zone 2A pressure-reducing valve replacement. Jason?
Sorry, I didn't get these ahead of schedule.
Thank you. Thank you. What we have before you is Task Order 10 with West Johnston Associates, we'll deal with them as WYA from here on out, to provide engineering and design services related to the replacement of two pressure-reducing valve stations within the city. And relationship to your council goals is to maintain, operate, and inspect our infrastructure. So, as you can probably imagine, and from some of the tours that we did, our water-distribution system is very complex. It's divided into multiple pressure zones in order to provide adequate pressure service to all of our customers who live at various elevations throughout the city. Each pressure zone is served by specific facilities, such as reservoirs, pump stations, and related piping, which are there solely to provide pressure to those customers. The city's existing distribution system is divided into five primary pressure zones, served by eight gravity-storage reservoirs and 13 booster-pump stations. And serving all of that is roughly 188 miles of pipe, in sizes ranging from 36 inches down to about 4 inches. Additionally, there are three pressure-reducing valves, which provide pressure to two intermediate pressure zones. And so, why that is important is, they're not served by any other infrastructure except for water going through those pressure-reducing valves. Pressure zones are set up to provide optimal pressure for all of our consumers. They are generally about 140 feet in elevation, so between the bottom of the pressure zone and the top is about 140 feet, which is why we have five of them throughout the valley, because we're kind of built in a bowl. And that allows water to be provided, which meets our minimum service at the highest level, without being too high at the bottom of the pressure zone. As an example, Pressure Zone 2A on the screen behind me runs from elevation of 960 to 1035, and it serves an area in the north end of town, and I'm going to back up just for a second, serves an area on the north end of town, which is kind of in a pocket between Pressure Zones 1 and 2, where we can't quite serve it from 2, because the pressures would be way too high, and we can't serve it from 1, because they would be just a little bit too low. And so, we have this modified pressure zone in there. So, number one is at Savage and Ninth Street, and I have some photos here to show some of our challenges, and it is, let me turn on the pointer, this little plate that you can see in the sidewalk here, just right in the street. And the second is at Hawthorne and Manzanita, and it actually is in the driving lane of the street. These are less-than-optimal locations for infrastructure, it makes it very hard to service and work on them. The current valves have been installed, not since XXXX, since the 1970s. Installations have numerous deficiencies. One of ones, I mentioned, they're very difficult to service, because one is right in the traffic lane, the other is on a pretty busy sidewalk, and then the valves are very, very small, the vaults are. You can't actually fit a walker inside the vault to service the valve and have room to work. There are no drains, so the valves are largely underwater year-round. And then, of course, Hawthorne is in the traffic lane, and the vault lids there are very noisy, and we receive frequent complaints from the neighbors. That's just kind of a photo, these were taken actually this week, which show that the valves are submerged, and these were just worked on about a month ago. There's just no way to keep water out of them, and no drains. So, because they're difficult to maintain, and they have not received regular inspections and care, we do look at them quite frequently, but because you really can't get in and do work on them frequently, it does cause for frequent failures. One valve did begin to fail this year dramatically, and that caused both high and low pressures within the zone. And what that was caused by is, was the valve would actuate, and it would open due to demand, it would stick open, and then it would let too much pressure in, and then it would finally close, but then it wouldn't open again fast enough, so then the pressure would drop. So, we did get emergency repairs made, but both valves really do need to be replaced. And then, as we look at that, one of the things we'll be doing is making every effort to relocate those valves to more serviceable locations within the right-of-way. So, Task Order 10, which is what this resolution would approve, will provide engineering and design services to both PRV stations. The work will be performed that will basically ensure that the new valves are correctly sized. So, one of the other things that with pressure-reducing valve stations like this, you don't see one big valve, you actually have a small valve and a big valve, and the small valve handles all of the normal domestic flow, and then the bigger valve comes on as those demands increase, provides much better service level to our customers. The consultant will identify potential sites that will allow us to put those valves in, in a valve vault that's suitable for working on them. They will also provide us with complete contract documents for bidding the projects out. The project is going to be developed as two separate projects, and that is because we don't know what the final cost is going to be when we get to building these, and so, to make it more, or easier on the utility, we're going to have two separate bid packages, and we can bid them at separate times if the costs are too high. That way, we can stage those out. They will also provide bidding support, which is answering questions from prospective bidders, as well as evaluation of those bids, and then engineering support during construction, and that is providing assistance, clarifying RFIs or requests for information, and reviewing the submittals from the selected contractor, and providing record drawings at the conclusion of the project. The cost for that work is $128,948. There are funds within the water rate, from the water rate revenues. Final project costs are estimated, and this is just an estimate at this juncture, at $500,000, but will be defined better through the engineering and design process, so we'll have a firm number for you when we come back. This, again, is scheduled for your approval or consideration tonight, but can be deferred at your discretion. And with that, I, again, will take any questions. Does anybody have any questions for, Joel first, and then Rob?
So, the first question I had was, what are the implications of not doing this on our firefighting efforts?
So, as I alluded to, the one valve that failed, it couldn't respond quick enough, so you may not be able to get fireflow capacities in that zone if it were to fail again in the future.
Okay, then the lack of maintenance in this area, also for citizens, either low pressure, or you blow out the dishwasher, or what?
100%, and that's actually how we found it, a hose, somebody's hose in their yard, which was on at the hose bib, but off at a squeeze nozzle, over-pressurized and actually ruptured. And so, that's actually what led us up there to kind of search it out, and that's when we found that the valve had failed.
And then, the third thing I understand, and if I understand incorrectly, correct me, that no funds from the general revenue are being spent on this, and this is maintenance that has already been budgeted and needs to be done for our firefighting efforts and to supply our citizens.
Yeah, no general fund revenues, as always, for water projects, it's 100% water-rate funded.
Okay, thank you.
Rob?
So, I can only, in my mind, picture the valve that's on Hawthorne and Manzanita, and it's, you know, you describe it as being in the middle of the traffic lane, it's not like it's in the middle of the intersection, but I'm just wondering, so are there any easements that are going to be required to go on private property? Because it doesn't seem like, to me, that that one could be moved, you know, that much more out of the way, and especially if you want to enlarge the, you know, the box around it. So, are there any easements involved, or it's still going to stay in the-
There is a potential for looking at easements, we're also looking at the potential relocation. Can this valve be plugged in a little bit, in a different location, where there's more land available, or more right-of-way available? So, that's part of what the study's going to do, because you're absolutely correct. It either has to stay in the traffic lane in a bigger vault, or we have to find a different location for it. Eric, and then Rick?
How you doing? Thank you for the-
Yeah.
For the brief here. Wanted to ask you, as far as, you mentioned it was, the valves were put in a 1970s timeframe, so if there was the potential for any kind of warranty or anything like that, it's probably not going to happen, because it's been so long. So, my question is, I guess, going forward, if we go through with the change of the valves, are there any guarantees of work, or anything like that, say, something happens to the valve in the future, are we going to have to pay, is the city going to have to pay a lot more to readdress the situation, or is the work performed guaranteed, essentially is what I'm asking?
Yeah, all the work that we do definitely, you have varying levels of warranty. So, the first is going to be with your general contractor, and that almost always is for a full year after construction, and we actually will hold a project bond for the duration of that year, so that we're able to get that work done. After that, you then have various levels of manufacturer's warranties, and some manufacturers will warrant their parts for far longer than others. I can say that the manufacturer of these valves, ClayVal, I think they have like a five-year warranty, they're very, very reputable, the valves are almost indestructible, as you can see, they work underwater, and they've been there for a lot of years. So, they have been serviced previously, I think they've been rebuilt twice since I've been with the city now, and I'm coming on year 30, so a couple of times in 15 years, they're very, very robust valves, so, yep. Rick?
Thank you, Jason. So, the big valve is the one that would be engaged when you have a need for fireflow, or can the smaller valve provide as well?
Yeah, it'll probably end up being both. What ends up happening is the smaller valve opens, it's funny, I almost put in a video of this, ClayVal had a great video of it that shows it dramatically, and then it reaches its capacity, and so the pressure starts to drop on the downstream side of the valves, and so the second, the larger valve then begins to open and carry the flow, but the smaller one never closes. And then, as that pressure comes up, because the flow decreases, the bigger valve closes, and then the little one picks back up and closes when the flow goes to nothing.
Thank you.
Any more questions? Indra?
Yes, so, should we approve tonight? And there's a relocation, you're going to look at that, would that come back before us to approve the relocation of it?
If we have to purchase property, if it's just going to be within the right-of-way at a slightly different location, we traditionally have not brought that back to council, but if we're going to be either purchasing easements or right-of-way to place this in, absolutely 100%, that comes back to you. Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Jason. Thank you very much. So, now we have ability for public comment in regards to, if anybody wants to speak on the engineering and design services application for this valve replacement, you can come up now. If not, all right, thank you. Sorry, I'm bringing it back to council discussion. Joel?
Well, again, I don't want to cut off discussion if people want to talk about it, but I think in order to maintain our firefighting capabilities and adequate service to our citizens, unless somebody wants to discuss something, I'm going to go ahead and make the motion. Okay, I see nodding heads. If somebody else wants to talk about it, feel free to do so. I move to, let me put my glasses on, adopt the resolution authorizing the city manager to execute Task Order Number 10 with West Yoke Associates, Incorporated, for engineering and design services for Zone 2A pressure-reducing valve replacements.
Second by Victoria? For first reading? We'll go into, any further discussion, we'll leave it up, no, we'll go into a vote. Kathleen?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Indra?
Yes.
Victoria?
Yes.
Passed unanimously, thank you. Next, we have a resolution creating a fee schedule for city-managed special events. And with a staff presentation, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members of the public, I'm Dana Pierce of the Economic Development Division. Tonight, I'm presenting on city-managed special events fee schedule. This resolution creates a fee schedule for city-managed special events, including vendor fees, food truck fees, and t-shirt sales rates for the three events, Fourth of July, Art Along the Rogue, and the tree lighting, which are managed by the city. This relates to the council goals of leadership and encouraging economic opportunities. So, a little bit of background, all fees imposed by the city are established and adopted by the city council, and the city council determines the fee amounts. Tonight, we're talking about fees specific to the city-managed events, which, again, are Fourth of July, Art Along the Rogue, and tree lighting. Reasons for establishing fees and charges for city-managed events are to clearly communicate fees and charges of the city to the public, increase transparency with the community, merchants, and other event participants. Fees of participation are often a method for a cost recovery. Additional revenues also help supplement the rising costs of goods and services for events, and contribute to the success and expansion of these events. User fees also help to attract quality vendors and make events more financially sustainable, including vendors and food trucks and city-managed events as increased community participation, and is a welcome and expected element of these events. So, now, let's take a look at the proposed fee schedule, it's also on page 288 of your packet. The Economic Development Division researched various city and community-managed events throughout the state of Oregon, and we've established these proposed fees that fall within the range of those that we researched. You can see how it's broken down by event, we have Fourth of July, Art Along the Rogue, and the tree lighting here. There's a vendor fee and food truck fee established for the Fourth of July event, $60 for the vendor fee, and $300 for the food truck fee. Art Along the Rogue, vendor fee of $120. Art Along the Rogue is a multi-day event, and so that's why it's a little bit more. And the food truck fee of $300. T-shirt sales is really for cost recovery, so it's just cost plus 10%, rounded down to the nearest dollar. And then, for the tree lighting, we have a vendor fee of $60. You can see the asterisk there just indicates that the special event license vendor fee of $5 per vendor per day is within that rate, so that's not in addition, that's within the rate that's established here. The revenue source for our special events is LB6441, and so the other revenue sources are the general fund sponsorships, vendor fees, which include the vendors and food trucks, miscellaneous would be the t-shirt sales, and then grants as well. There isn't much cost implication, except for maybe a minimal staff time each year to review annual updates. And the call to action is this evening, it's at council discretion. It's recommended that council adopt a resolution creating a fee schedule for city-managed special events, including vendor fees, food truck fees, and t-shirt rates. Alternatives would be to request further review at a workshop, deny the city-managed events fee schedule. And here's a motion for you, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Does anybody have any questions? Rick, and then Kathleen?
Thank you, Dana. Can you go back to Slide 5? The fees?
Let's hear you.
Okay. Were the food truck owners, a survey taken, and their input looked at when that fee was proposed, or what sort of input have you had on their fee?
Yeah, we didn't do a full survey of the food trucks, we have worked with a food truck vendor that has run the food truck festival for the Fourth of July event, it is within the rates that we did see at other city and community-organized events. Some fees are set up differently, then they either do a per-event fee sometimes, or a per-day, we just went with a set per-event for all events, that way, it's clean and easy.
Thank you.
Kathleen?
Yeah, I was just wondering, have we had prior fee schedules, and how much of an increase are these?
We have charged fees. This is the first time we're establishing a fee schedule, which is what we need to do. These are the same that have been charged, I said, except, with the exception to the food truck fee, I believe last year, that was $250, and then we are raising it to the $300, because it fits more within the range that we were seeing. But the other rates, the $60 and the $120 rate, and the cost for t-shirt sales are all what has been charged previously.
Rob, and then Joel?
So, just to be completely transparent, on page 287 of the packet, there's, in the middle of the page, it says background. Should I keep talking, or are you going to pull something up on the screen? It doesn't-
I'm sorry, what was the question?
That's fine. Okay, so, second paragraph, where it says background, down a couple sentences, it said that council can consider fees for participation as a method- council can consider fees for participation as a method of cost recovery. So since you don't have, nothing even close to the total amount that the city has devoted to these events, it probably should say as a method, as a partial method of cost recovery. So it's not as if these fees are paying for these events, correct? It's a partial.
That's correct.
A small partial.
Yeah, that's correct.
Thank you.
Joel?
Dana, good presentation, thank you. I didn't understand, what are the costs of t-shirts? Are we buying t-shirts? The city buying them and selling them or?
Yes, for Art Along the Rogue, we purchase t-shirts that we sell to the public.
Okay, and then the vendor does that for us? Is that what you're saying? Or we have a city booth where we do that?
We do, we sell it at the city booth.
Okay, and so then do we make profit on those t-shirts?
We do not. We typically don't make back what we spend. We do give away a lot of those t-shirts to artists and other people that volunteer for the event.
Okay, so what you're saying is then what we charge is ten percent less than what it costs us?
We're seeing.
Oh, no, additional.
Yeah, it's ten percent more.
Ten percent more, okay.
Rounded down to the nearest dollar and then typically that's not still gonna cover the full cost of the t-shirts.
I understand, okay, thank you.
Indra?
May I get clarification? I might have just missed it. So in, on two eighty-eight, it says the Experience Grants Pass established a vendor rate of seventy-five per event. Can you, you've been charging fees, there just hasn't been a schedule. Can you go through what the fees are again? You might have said it for the vendor fee, food truck fee for each. These are the proposed, there's no table of what the fees were, correct?
Right, because we didn't have a set table.
Do you have a set fee for what they were in the past or you just made it up as?
We did it based on the information that we had gotten from the previous vendor. So the previous vendor was a for-profit vendor that provided us information on how those events were run. We only took over running these events in two thousand twenty-two. And so we just followed that method prior and so now we're trying to do it the right way and make sure that the fees are set and transparent and the public knows what they are.
Okay, so what was the vendor fee then in twenty-two and twenty-three for these events?
For, at least for this year, for twenty-four, I can say the vendor fee was sixty dollars.
And three hundred, that is what we charged in twenty-four for these events?
That is not what we charged this year. We charged two fifty this year for the food truck.
Okay. And then for both, for Art Along the Rogue and the Fourth of July? Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Victoria?
So the event, let's say the Fourth of July, which has a lot of costs with, you know, fireworks and all that. So you're just saying that you're basing these fees, just tell me if I'm correct, on the profit that the food truck would make or the vendor would make? So the food truck would be a higher revenue gainer at this event and that's why the fee is higher? Or is it that the wear and tear on the city or the use of city services like water and such is much more for those? I mean, so what goes into the consideration of three, of sixty dollars for a vendor fee versus three hundred dollars for a food truck, if that makes sense?
Yeah, sure.
Thank you.
The food trucks do have a higher impact on the city. They typically have a lot more waste that come from them, they have power needs, they require inspection, things like that. So they do have a higher cost.
Just one more question about, so is a vendor a pop-up tent, table type thing versus?
Yeah, typically it's a ten-by-ten space that most people bring a pop-up tent, yeah.
Any other questions? Okay, none of questions, thank you.
Thank you.
We're gonna open up for public comment. If you have any public comment in regards to creating a fee schedule for city-managed events, you can come up to the podium now. Please state your name and where you live and please stay on topic.
This is related to the comments that were just now?
Yes, sir, please, please, about the fee schedule for the vendor.
Oh, I'm finally understanding decorum and parliamentary procedure, I apologize. So if you vote on it now, does it mean that any extension or limitation of the scope of this is limited? Or does it mean that it's just simply a conceptual model of the fee structure that has flexibility?
This is adopting this fee schedule as stated on the screen.
Oh, okay. So I would, and I can't provide suggestions, right? It's just simply to understand it.
Just basically, a public comment at this point is whether you would be in favor of doing this or you would not be in favor of doing this.
I think that the city council and our community could raise more money without upsetting the community and feel like they're getting a lot more for their money and we can generate more revenue for other things we want to do. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else have public comment? Yes, sir. State your name, please, and where you live. Thank you.
Paul Mitchell, nine oh one Northwest Regent Drive in Grants Pass. I'm following up on Counselor Pell's question about clarifying that it's a partial recovery of cost. I would ask if you could inquire of staff, is that a five percent, fifty percent, seventy-five percent recovery? Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, seeing none, thank you very much. Back to council for discussion.
I would inquire of staff what percentage of recovery this would be, if you know.
Maybe while Dana's coming up, I can give just one example. So you had mentioned Counselor, the Fourth of July. So we, in the past couple of years, have generally just to purchase the fireworks from the vendor, which includes the fireworks themselves, as well as the operator, who of course has to be, you know, very specifically trained, as well as their transportation, all that, in, you know, the sixteen to eighteen thousand dollar range. So that doesn't include, you know, any other costs that we may incur. That's just that one contract to purchase the fireworks for Fourth of July. Art Along the Rogue, you know, two-and-a-half-day event, stages, bands, music. At a high level, I guess where I'm going with the comment here is that these do not come anywhere close to full cost recovery, to Counselor Pell's point. The goal really is to, you know, have some minimal opportunity for the city to, you know, recover some amount of revenue from those who are benefiting from the event that we are putting on. So it's certainly not unusual. You know, as Dana mentioned, you have cities across the state, across the country, who sponsor events where there's some kind of nominal fee to participate. So to the question, unfortunately, we don't have a specific percentage of what a, you know, a sixty-dollar vendor fee times thirty vendors, you know, is not going to cover even half of what just the sixteen thousand dollar cost is to buy the fireworks. So we could certainly provide, you know, any more detail that the council wants and we're here to, you know, do that research and give you so that you feel good about it, but we wouldn't have those. So I don't, do you have any more information, Dana?
I think you covered it. That's basically where I was gonna go with that, too. Yeah, we have some ideas of what that's covering, but we don't have an exact percentage tonight. We'd have to calculate that and figure that out.
And at this point, just to clarify, at this point, this is the first time that you guys have put together a fee schedule, so this is kind of learning process and going forward and trying to recoup a little bit.
Yes.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, we have the ability to entertain a motion at this point. Rob?
Well, I was gonna do a little discussion, but I could make a motion. We'll do discussion first, I guess. So the way I see this, it's essentially, I think it's just trying to standardize a fee schedule so that it's not a moving target and so that vendors know exactly what they'd be getting into without using a lot of staff time. It's real easy, it'd be the same, it's all in writing, and then it's kind of a yes or no, do I want to pay this or not pay this? But I also think, even though these fees are a tiny fraction, very, very tiny fraction of what the events cost, I wouldn't look at them as being any kind of recovery of the costs involved. It's basically having a standard schedule is basically just trying to keep it from being or having any fees at all and having, requiring any permits at all from the city is to trying to keep these events from being a free-for-all, where just anyone could come and pop up a tent or a table or this or that. So there's some order, there's some minimum barrier to entry. In other words, somebody's got to come up with sixty bucks or they've got to come up with a hundred bucks or whatever they've got to come up with. And it's kind of, to me, a pretty minor, it's a pretty minor action that we'd be taking. And if somehow these fees are way, way out of line in the future, we're gonna hear about it and we could adjust them. But I think it just essentially standardizes it, makes it easier for staff, easier for vendors, and the fact that we have permits at all for these just keeps it from being a free-for-all. So I'd be voting in favor of potential motion, which someone else can make, the one that's in the packet, or I'll make it.
Thanks, Rob. Actually, I think that was a great explanation. I appreciate that. So any more discussion or you can throw a motion at the same time? Indra?
While I think we should have a fee schedule, I think that's a great idea and it's nice to recoup some costs. I'm just feeling that these fees are high and it's expensive to run a food truck and you have to pay insurance to go to the events, which is astronomical now. And so I think we should be more, a little more welcoming to our vendors out there and I'm not in favor of these fees.
Anyone else? Rob?
You know, I hear what you're saying there. If you look at Art Along the Rogue last year, I don't know if you attended the event, there were so many more vendors than there had ever been. As a matter of fact, many of them said they're not coming back because there were too many vendors, quite frankly, and they just couldn't make any money. And the fact is also that a lot of the food trucks, people were literally coming in some of the restaurants wanting to sit down and eat the food from the food trucks. In other words, they wanted to go on the brick and mortars and take advantage of the seats the brick and mortars had. So I don't think, again, based on the number of vendors, and there were vendors that had nothing whatever to do with art, you know? I mean, I think Master Brand had a cabinet, literally a cabinet table there, selling cabinets at Art Along the Rogue. So I think, I don't think there was any shortage of vendors. I don't think that the fees, these fees imposed are gonna actually deter people that actually are trying to make a few bucks with either their food truck or a living. I don't think that it's going to deter people. And again, some of these events have way more vendors than they can actually support. We're actually gonna see less vendors just because there isn't enough business for everybody, regardless of the fees. So I'm gonna be, I'm gonna make a motion. I move to approve the resolution creating a fee schedule for city-managed special events.
Got it. Kathleen, second. Thanks for the motion, Rob. So we have a motion on the table with a second. Any further discussion? Victoria?
I don't know if I can do this, but I would be in favor of voting for this, but I would like to add an amendment, I don't know if it's too late, to lower the food truck fee to the two hundred and fifty dollars that it was just previously.
I would agree to amend my motion.
Okay, Rob, can you restate your motion then? With the amendment? Thank you.
I agree, I agree with the amendment and just gotta go to the second now.
Thanks. Can we get a second? Kathleen will second it. Any further discussion? Okay, so at this point, we have amendment on the table to adopt the fee schedule with an amendment to lower the food truck fee to two hundred and fifty. And that's across the board for each event, just for clarification. Okay. We'll go to a vote. Kathleen?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Indra?
Yes.
Victoria?
Yes.
Passed unanimously, thank you. Okay, at this point, we're going to, we've done with council business, we're gonna open this up to public comment. This is an opportunity for the public to address the city on items not related to a public hearing or council action that's listed on this agenda. Items for, the intent is to provide information that is pertinent to city's jurisdiction. Each speaker will be given two minutes to address council as one body. Please do not address individuals. This meeting will proceed in an effective and courteous manner. Citizens and council members will be allowed to state their position in an atmosphere free of slander, threats, and other personal attacks. Signs and placards, outbursts of applause, campaigning for public finance, or disruptive behavior will not be tolerated. If you have a question regarding any governmental provided service or a current city policy, please contact the city manager's office and attempt to resolve the matter. At this point, I have a number of cards that were turned in previous of meeting and we're gonna just start with number one. Mike Pelfrey, please come to the podium, state your name again and where you live and proceed forward. You have two minutes.
Yes, Mike Pelfrey, city resident. So it's our understanding, of course, that the city finds itself in a lawsuit by another liberal attorney. So I made a comment this morning at the county commission meeting, in my opinion, if anybody should be sued, it should not be the city, it should be the nonprofits. And the reason I say that is because the nonprofits, I know that there are a couple nonprofits that have medical professionals on their board, doctors. Matter of fact, one of the doctors is very opinionated and I won't mention his name. But what my concern is, is how are these medical professionals out there knowing that we have people that have disabilities? And if they're so concerned about these people, why haven't they offered to do something about it? Why do they let them stay out there in those conditions? The other thing that I noticed is that, do you know how many empty hotel rooms, motel rooms that we have in the city of Grants Pass? Why haven't the nonprofits put these people that are supposedly so vulnerable? Because remember, these are medical professionals that have brought this up. Why haven't they done something for our vulnerable population? And last but not least, I'd like to address the fact that this particular current city council with the new people are the ones that have been attacked, but yet it's my understanding that it was the previous city council, of which three people on this dais were a member of, as well as the city manager. And all of that happened under y'all's watch, not these folks. So they're having to clean up a mess that you guys created. I don't think that the arrows should be attacked at or should be directed at the current new city council members. They're having to come in and clean up a mess that our dysfunctional mayor.
Thanks, Mike. Time's up.
Created.
Thank you very much. Okay, Sean, go ahead and come up to the podium, state your name again and where you live and please proceed. Thank you.
Thank you, council. My name is Sean Vole. I live in the city and I own a business in the city. As many of you know, I was the neighbor to the J Street encampment and I'd like to share a little bit about that experience. So the question I keep hearing since we closed the J Street camp, which was the right thing to do, thank you, council, and thank you, chief, the question I keep hearing is where are these people gonna go? And I think it's the wrong question to be asking because when we cleaned out the parks, there was roughly sixty to seventy tents in the camp. Counselor King and I actually had this conversation in my yard one day, and when we closed the camp, six months later, there was over two hundred tents. So the question is where did people come from? And the answer is they came from everywhere but here. I keep hearing these people are from here, they're not from here. We quadrupled the amount of people in that camp in six months. So the question, the real question is, if we wait another year, how many people are we gonna have to deal with then? Two thousand, three thousand, five thousand? It's a question worth raising because I love this community, I support it, I'll do anything that I can to support it and asking for more homeless people to move here because we make it easy for them is not. asking for more homeless people to move here because we make it easy for them is not good for this community. I don't believe that at all. And I believe that the Mint Foundation has been a big supporter of that. And I was under the impression that the Mint Foundation was good, trying to help out. But I'm no longer under the impression that we need to support that. We need to support rehab. And I don't see the Mint Foundation supporting rehab at all. I did like the, the roundtable you guys had last week about the other nonprofits and getting them to engage together and having a step-by-step rehab procedure. Outstanding. I thought that was great. In closing, I would like to thank Chief Hensman. I know that you didn't have the best of situations, at least in my circumstance, in the J Street circumstance. And to see you have your hands untied a little bit and have your officers being able to do the job that they're hired to do, I'm proud to see that. And I'm proud of, proud of the council's decisions. Keep up the good work.
Thank you, Sean. Very much. And Bree, go ahead and come to the podium, state your name again and where you are. And go ahead. Thank you.
Bree Boucher. I'm a city resident. And my husband and I owned R and M, the property adjacent to the former J Street homeless camp. Today, I stand before you filled with gratitude as we reflect on the decision made with both compassion and courage. Our mayor and council members have taken a bold step in the right direction by closing the Zero Barrier J Street homeless camp and allowing the Seven Street camp to remain open and available with regulated hours, a decision that reflects their unwavering commitment to our community's safety, dignity, and well-being. I speak with confidence knowing that this decision wasn't made lightly, but it was made with the voices of our hardworking business owners, citizens, and the mental health and safety of those that lived within the camp. The businesses surrounding the camp, ours included, have faced severe property damage, vandalism, and theft. We do not wish what we went through for the last five months on any business, neighborhood, or individual. These local businesses are the lifeblood of our, of our community, and they deserve to operate in an environment where they can thrive and contribute to the growth of our city. On a note of compassion, I sincerely believe that allowing a human being to live under the conditions of J Street was inhumane. By allowing individuals to remain trapped in the confines of addiction and to live in a lawless manner on a repetitive cycle, we are not being compassionate. I would argue, in fact, that this is a form of cruelty. Proverbs 27:17 says, "As iron sharpens iron, so one person sharpens another." Compassion doesn't always mean giving someone everything they request. Sometimes compassion looks like taking a firm stance. By doing so, we encourage someone to improve their circumstances because their life is worth more than the way that they may currently be living. To our mayor and council members, thank you for your leadership, for standing up for the voices of businesses, citizens, and families alike. Your decision is a testament to your commitment to our shared prosperity. Together, we will continue to work towards solutions that truly help those who are homeless while ensuring our community remains a place where everyone can succeed and live with dignity. Thank you.
Thanks, Bree. Sean, step up to the podium and restate your name and where you live. Thank you.
Sean Nelson, Grants Pass resident. And I just got asked to put into my speech, actually, that when we did our rally today, which I didn't get to get there. But anyway, we were rallying against the judge that is against our city, that is against you guys, which leads me right in to say, I'm proud of y'all. You know what? And I also want to say, people of this good city, when I put this video out there, remember that your voice is heard. And here is my part of saying that. I am leading a campaign right now against the Crest Motel. All right? The reason is, it is a biohazard. All right? And I want to say, the part that I said, thank you, guys. I feel that I've been heard. All right? We're trying to make changes. All right? Our chief over here took, actually heard me speak out. They put a lock on that garbage can, even though, all right, the Crest Motel owner, if they've even got a hold of him, all right, didn't think it was going to help. Now, I got to admit, I guess he was right. Because on top of the lid was the campers' garbage. What do I mean, campers? All right? You have campers now, camping outside the Crest Motel. Now, when I was speaking there, right, because I talk into a video when I'm doing it, taking a video of what's going on at that establishment. Well, all of a sudden, which really surprised me, I end up with tenants coming out to me going, hey, are you the guy that does the videos? I'm like, yes, I am. How you doing? They're like, would you do me a favor and tell people that I literally have people doing IV drugs below my window when I'm trying to sleep? I'm like, you know what? I can do that. I think I am going to do that, and I think it's important. I also think it's important now that we find out how many kids live at the Crest Motel and have a problem might be affected by biohazards. I think that might be a city issue that we should address. Thank you very much for listening to me and my very boisterous statement. Have an amazing day. Thank you.
David Depper?
Hi, David Depper, city resident. You know, I'm wondering, with this new lawsuit, is it going to be ad infinitum, one lawsuit after another? Can't we put a reasonable stop, like they did with ambulance chasers? They're, they're complaining in this thing from way back in November about the non-ADA conformance of the J Street Park. And now they're griping about it being closed. And this Judge Dussin, remember that name in election time, when you vote for a circuit court judge. We need to do something about this mess and just stop the madness. There's got to be a way, like I say, frivolous lawsuit to stop that madness. And is this Judge Dussin, does he hate our children in our neighborhoods? And does he want to destroy our city? Just remember that name when it's time to vote again.
Thank you, David. Christopher? Thanks, Christopher. Come up and restate your name and tell us where you live. And go right ahead.
Christopher Nadeau, both counties. This is really great and enlightening. The only biohazard, lack of compassion, discernment, accountability of homelessness to advance into non-homless. I've been asked by local businesses to do an assessment of our homeless system. I'm doing that. I'm asking for a meeting with the city manager, if that's possible. 60% of our percent of homeless are older adults, some working, some in cars, most non-addictive to other things other than maybe alcohol, tobacco, which I'm an addict of alcohol, tobacco, and coffee. The challenge is that we have 77 million baby boomers that are all going to retire in the next 35 years. It's like a pig moving through the belly of a python. The impact, just, I was an advocate to reform social security when they sold, told the seven trillion. Okay? We, this is going to have such a huge impact, not just on this community, every place in America. They destroyed Portland. They destroyed San Francisco. That's not going to happen here. But we've got to have compassion. We have to do exactly what the police are doing, which is, are you on a path? Are you on a path of non-homlessness? Are you on a path of addiction recovery? If it's anything other than get out, we don't care about you. Well, that's like this other gentleman here, who's a Republican like I am. He just doesn't care. He wants to blame one motel owner. It's a nuanced problem. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Okay. So that goes through our public comment. At this moment in time, we're going to move on to the consent agenda. We have one starred item for presentation. And I'm going to turn it over to staff, which will be led by Aaron.
Yeah, I'm needing to pull something up here.
Sorry, I'm a little foggy today. I'm a little under the weather, so my brain's a little foggy, but.
All right. Good evening, mayor, council, members of the public. I'm here to present to you some information with regards to a resolution consenting to the appointment of Stephanie Nuttall as city attorney. And this follows your goal of leadership. So just to give you a background, as you well are aware, we currently have a contract for legal services, as we have been without a city attorney and in-house city attorney since March of 2024. When that vacancy came up, we immediately went into recruitment mode, where our human resources department started recruiting for the position. There were a few applicants that we did get, applications that we did get. Generally, they were unqualified for the position, and were missing key experience areas. In September 24, after several unsuccessful recruitment attempts, the city contracted with the GMP consultants for assistance with the city attorney recruitment process. GMP was able to provide us with heavy advertising in popular areas, additional outreach in a number of different forums, mailers to law firms, direct correspondence to Oregon Bar members, et cetera. Through that recruitment process, we did receive two quality candidates. Now, both candidates met the qualifications. One candidate, as a positive, also currently resided in southern Oregon. One candidate was out of state, but was looking forward to relocating Through the engagement process, both candidates conducted, we conducted a preliminary review background through the consultant, and they moved forward to the interview process. We're looking forward to interviewing the two candidates. The candidate from Oregon remained engaged and was excited about coming to Grants Pass. And the other candidate ghosted the recruiter and stopped returning calls. This is unfortunately not a isolated situation. We have been ghosted multiple times on many positions, whether it be from recruitment for public safety or community development, et cetera. There seems to be a trend in that that is just So the exciting thing about the candidate that stayed in the, in the field for wanting this position is Stephanie Nuttall. And her resume is impressive. It comes with a bar membership that is above and beyond many that we see. She has an Oregon State Bar. She also has bar membership in the U.S. District Court, District of Oregon Bar, something that's extremely rare and I sought after is also she has bar membership for the Supreme Court of the United States. And so that's very impressive, along with an active Minnesota State Bar license. Continuing, looking at her resume, we were very impressed with her education. She's got a Juris Doctorate, Masters of Science in GIS, and two Bachelors of Science, one in criminology and one in political science. Another impressive thing is her work experience. She's been in the work field about 18 years. And 16 of those years was with one organization, employed with you as the Assistant County Attorney in Winona County, Minnesota. It's very impressive that you find a candidate that has long-term experience in one location. And that's something that is sought after. Stephanie is also, was employed with, as the Assistant Legal Counsel and Risk Manager for Josephine County as a, as a local resident. And that's another bonus to this all, is that this is someone that, that happens to be local also. And she was employed there from 2023 to January 2025. To continue with her experience, what we were looking at on paper when we were going into this process is she's got some teaching experience. Stephanie is an active adjunct professor for a university with experience teaching courses in a number of items, including GIS, data engineering, data visualization, project management, and legal fundamentals of GIS. Recognizing that Stephanie was an extremely highly qualified candidate on paper, we wanted to try to get and try and fast-track some kind of interview process. What we've noticed in the past is sometimes the full recruitment process, especially when you're looking at recruitment process for, say, for instance, executive directors, they take longer than sometimes a recruitment process for another position within the city. So the X team moved quickly to try to get an initial interview with Stephanie to see if she would be a good fit and to sit down and talk with her. Through that process, we found that her personal interview with us was just as impressive as her resume that we were looking at. Recognizing also that she may have been being courted by others, which normally happens with quality candidates like this, we wanted to start a background immediately. As you may recall, some of the other council members may recall, we've gone through two other recruitment opportunities with executive staff members, and they've unfortunately washed out in the background. So we didn't want to waste resources and waste anybody's time. So we wanted to try to immediately get her in the background. Once we knew that the background was coming through clean, and I tell you, the background was extremely clean in every way and fashion, we wanted to, we wanted to also have an opportunity for some council members to meet with her after we knew the background was clean. We had an opportunity for three council members to sit down with Stephanie and have a discussion with her with regards to her candidacy to this position. As I mentioned, the background process, it is very rigid. It has washed out a number of what we thought were good-looking people on paper. But we do an extensive background, and we do that because we want to make sure we hire the best people and we hire the right people for the organization. Your call to action is at your discretion, but it is scheduled for today. And you've got all two alternatives. And it is my privilege and honor to recommend that we approve the resolution confirming appointment of Stephanie to, as legal counsel for the city, based on her qualifications, her interview process, interview process and background results. And that concludes my presentation, mayor.
Thank you, Aaron. At this point, does council have any poignant questions for Aaron? Victoria?
I make a motion not to approve the resolution.
So there's a motion on the table. Does anybody want to discuss or anything previous to that? Do you have any questions before you go? Joel, do you have a question?
Yeah, yes, I do. So hiring employees is one of the most important decisions any organization makes, as you know. And one of the things that we were drilled on, drilled hard on, because we need to spend a lot of time on this, and I apologize to the rest of you, I haven't spent the time that it deserves. Did anybody contact Minnesota? Did anybody contact Wally Cox and get references?
All of the above. Like I mentioned, we have an extensive interview process where we have a retired officer who spends time discussing, meeting with family members, friends, neighbors, previous employers, criminal history, background checks. It's extremely extensive. And that's why we've been able to find and actually unfortunately wash out some individuals in the past, is it is extremely extensive. What we're looking at from a standpoint of quality candidate, you can look in this room and look to my left here, right down on the dais. The X team that we have is an amazing group of individuals, and I would see Stephanie at par with those individuals sitting at the, at the dais.
So if I heard you correctly, then we did contact Minnesota?
Yes.
And we did contact Josephine County.
All previous employers gave her glowing results and would rehire her.
Okay. Thank you.
We're still in question period here. So any, any other questions? Nope. Seeing shaking heads. Okay. So we do have a motion on the, on the dais at this moment in time. There's a motion to do not approve the resolution. Is there a second? Eric seconds. Any further discussion? Rob? And then Rick?
So I've got to, I've got to talk first about the process by which we got to this point today. And I'm extremely disappointed with the process. I'm probably the only one in the room that was part of the 212 Grants Pass City Charter Task Force, where we specifically adjusted our charter so that the council had to be involved in the hiring and firing of the city attorney. We've only had the opportunity to, or the need to do that once before. That was a couple of years ago with a person who became city attorney, Augustus Ogu. And I felt that that process was really, really good. Six members, five or six members of the X team were in the room with myself and Councilor Lovelace. We all had the opportunity to ask questions. More importantly, we all had the opportunity to listen to the answers to the questions that the other people asked, the other, the members of the X team and other counselors and so forth. And after the applicant left the room, we all had the opportunity to discuss any differences of opinion that we might have had with some of the answers. And I felt that that process worked really, really well. And I felt that it respected both the council and the intent of the charter. And the charter changed that the, that the people passed in 2012 or 13. For some reason, and I asked Aaron about this in an email, I asked him about it in person, I don't feel that I got a satisfactory person, I don't feel that I got a satisfactory answer. For some reason, that process was not the same this time. So basically, Aaron is making a decision with more information than council has, because no council member was in the room with the X team during the formal interview. As an afterthought, counselors were invited to a, I would call it a perfunctory informal, and it was actually called by Aaron, an informal meet and greet or an informal whatever, essentially after the decision had been made by the X team, and council didn't participate in that at all. There were no counselors present, no counselors were invited, and I know that myself and probably some of the other counselors could have met very quickly had we, you know, if times were of the essence, like Aaron seemed to indicate that it was. If the X team could gather within a day or two or three to interview somebody, I'm sure people from the council could have been right there as well, but we were not invited. For some reason, the process changed from the prior time when it actually worked really well. I'm extremely disappointed, and again, to me, that showed a lack of respect for the council and a lack of respect for the charter, with no explanation that was satisfactory as to why it changed from the way we did it a couple of years ago, which seemed to work well. With that said, I would vote tonight, if I get the chance, depending on how this motion goes, I would get the, if I get the chance to vote or make a motion to approve the hiring. I felt that when I did get to meet the applicant with a couple of other councils in the room, and when I looked at her resume, she seemed reasonable, seemed sharp, she seemed on point, she seemed focused, and was impressive to me. I would have much preferred to have been part of the entire process with the X team. Right now, the way it is, essentially, I believe the city manager had elevated his department heads and given them more weight in this hiring process than any counselor got, because they were involved in the actual formal interview. Council was not. But nonetheless, after meeting her, and I realized that our city needs a city attorney, I realized that we've been trying to hire one for a while, and I'm not actually going to support, I would say, punishing the entire city, because the manager chose a process that I feel is very inappropriate. So I'm going to vote against this motion to not hire Stephanie, because I felt that she interviewed well, and I felt that she was on point. I didn't, I've, when I've asked in the community about her, I've received nothing negative that I would call credible from an unbiased source. So I've received some positive. I don't, I believe that was an unbiased source, but not necessarily anyone that really, really, that carries a lot of weight with me, but I got no negative from anyone that I would say was unbiased and would be in a position to know anything about her. So I'm going to vote against this, because I feel that we need a city attorney. I feel that she would probably be a very good fit. She seems to like Southern Oregon, which is really good. And again, my disappointment with the process is not going to prevent me from supporting her being hired.
Mayor, I have to, I have to step in and correct a couple of things. One, the city council actually had more representation through this process, as you had three individuals in an interview process, just like we had a next team. The candidate went through two interview processes, one with three council members and myself present, and the others with our executive team. Instead of just having two council members going through that, there was no intent or malfeasance to have something taken away from council that's actually provided more feedback from council and an opportunity for more council members to provide feedback to me on the candidate and through this interview process. So if you'd like to go back to the other in the future, we can move forward with doing that in the future. But as I mentioned before, there were some time constraints, there were some things that we wanted to try to get ahead of the game when it came to seeing and offering her a position, so we can get her in background immediately, because we knew that there was potentially other courting individuals and that this was a highly qualified candidate. So I appreciate what you commented on, Counselor, and we can try to be better in the future.
I'd like to respond. Hopefully, there is no future here, because hopefully, if we do hire her, it lasts quite a while. So hopefully, we don't have to relive this. However, again, I will say, when counselors are in the room with six or seven X team members, who are all professionals in the management of city government, they're likely to ask a lot of insightful questions, questions that may not come from necessarily volunteers who were in a room in that situation, possibly for the first time. But us, as counselors, we're not privy to any of that. We got to see none of that. We got a lot less information, regardless of how many people were in the room, we got a lot less information than we did the last time, because you changed the process without asking the council.
Rick had some questions, comments? Go ahead, Rick.
I was part of the interview of the counselors that sat down with Stephanie, and I was real impressed with her background. Her resume shows a lot of experience, and I would be in favor of hiring her. Thank you.
We're still open for discussion. Anybody else? Indra?
So this is a huge hiring decision, and I feel like I don't know this candidate at all. I was unable to make the informal interview. I wouldn't know her if she walked into the room. She might be here now. I don't know. So I don't, I'm hesitant, I don't feel like I know enough about her to even make a decision, and it's put before council to approve, so I don't know how I can approve something or someone to this important position without really even knowing anything about that person except the sheet and what you said tonight. So the other thing is, I'm really hesitant to, it's sad that we can't get people to apply. So my other hesitancy is that we, it's like the only person, like we don't even have a choice of who to pick. So that's, that would be my other concern. So I am, I'm in favor of the motion to not approve.
Okay, we're still in discussion. Joel?
I'm like my previous fellow counselor. I apologize, I didn't do all my homework, and I need to, and much like the first one where the overlay, you folks needed more information, I've gotten a lot of mixed feedback from people, from all different kinds of sources. And so I'm going to vote against not approving it today, but I would request that we delay it for, till our next meeting, and then if there's some, where you can know who she is, if we can arrange something like that, but then I'd also like the opportunity to call some people personally and talk with them, which I already should have done, I apologize for that, but to say that we're not going to hire now, from my perspective, with the information that I have and the mixed feedback I've gotten, I don't think is appropriate. So I'm going to be voting no on the motion also.
Okay, anybody else for discussion? Okay, so we have a current motion on the dais to not to approve this hire. There has been a second. Last call for discussion. Rob?
Okay, so Joel, you're saying that you would like to see this matter tabled. In other words, if this, if this motion were to fail, the motion not to hire were to fail, you would like to see this matter tabled until our next meeting? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
I'd just like to add, I guess, even, that would, I guess, be consistent with the way we handled the other issue, correct? The way the majority voted on the other issue was to table the overlay hearing until other counselors were confident they had more information. Thank you.
Rick?
So Mayor, can you also restate the motion and also indicate what a yes and a no would express?
Yes, I can. So the motion on the dais right now is do not approve the resolution. It has a second. If you vote yes for do not approve the resolution, then this applicant will not be hired or will not have the approval of council. If you vote no, then I, I guess, I don't know, I'm actually in a quandary.
It could mean a number of things.
So if you, if you vote...
Clint?
Sorry, go ahead.
If we vote no, and that motion dies, we could open up to another motion that says we can table it, or we could open up to another motion that says we could hire her tonight.
That's how I feel, because I think, I mean, the way I'm reading this, if you, if you have the second motion there, do not approve, and it fails, then it's still up for debate. Okay, sorry, any further discussion before I call a vote? Last call. Okay, so currently, we have a motion on the dais, do not approve resolution, do not approve hire. Kathleen?
Yes.
Yes, Joel?
No.
Rick?
No.
Eric?
Yes.
Rob?
No.
Indra?
Yes.
Victoria?
Yes.
Okay, I have four yeses and three nos. So as I count it, the motion do not approve resolution passes. So at this point, we have the rest of the consent agenda available to us. There was talk about one item on the consent agenda. Is there any more discussion on that, or I'm leaving it open for that?
I had a point of clarification.
Yes, Eric?
Just wanted to make sure that, I want to make sure that the, that if we approve, since we approved this, that it's taken off the consent agenda and that we do not override the vote. We just had a not approve, item A.
Correct. Procedure was that we started the item on the consent agenda, we had presentation, and we left it for a singular vote. So it is taken off the consent agenda. Before I call for a motion, is there any more discussion on the consent agenda?
I would, I would like to move item H to February the eighteenth. Is that our next? Did I have the correct date? To our next meeting. Move item H to our next meeting.
Okay, and you kind of got to give a reason. No reason?
There were some things on, on item H that needed to be corrected.
Okay, so item H, you feel needs corrections. There's a motion to table till February nineteenth. Is there a second? Eric, second. So there's a motion on the table to table consent agenda item H, which is approving the special city council meeting for January seventh, due to, tabling to the February nineteenth due to corrections, with a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, vote. Victoria?
Yes.
Indra?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Joel?
I wasn't there, so I'm going to abstain.
Okay, abstain?
Yes.
Okay, so we got one, two, three, four, five. Okay, so that passes, so we're going to table consent agenda item H to February nineteenth. So now we're looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda as it's been amended. Any discussion? Guys, got to say something, we're going to go forward.
I motion to approve the consent agenda as amended without reading the consent agenda.
That's fine. Okay, so we have a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended. We all understand what the amendments were? Okay, do we have a second? Indra, second. Any discussion? Seeing none. Kathleen?
Yes.
Okay, Joel?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Indra?
Yes.
Victoria?
Yes.
Unanimous. Consent agenda has been approved as amended. At this point, we will be adjourning the city council meeting and convening urban renewal agency meeting. We will commence with urban renewal agency meeting. First item is to resolution to designating the city manager as budget officer according to ORS two-nine-four-point-three-three-one. Do we have any presentation on that? Okay, so do we have any discussion on the consent agenda for the urban renewal agency meeting or a motion to approve or disapprove or whatever? We're talking about one item on the consent agenda for urban renewal agency meeting. I'm the one that's got a cold, my head's foggy, you guys should be on top of this.
I move to, I move to approve the consent agenda.
As written?
As written.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Okay, we have a motion to approve the consent agenda for the urban renewal agency meeting and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll go into a vote. Victoria?
Yes.
Indra?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Joel? I mean, sorry, Rick and Joel.
Yes, yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Okay, unanimous. Okay, that takes care of our business for the urban renewal agency meeting. We will currently adjourn the urban renewal agency meeting and reconvene as a city council meeting. At this point, we are opening up for matters for mayor, council, and staff. First open to matter, or mayor and council comments. Anybody have anything to add? Okay, I know we do have a busy schedule, so we do want to keep it efficient. Nothing? Go ahead.
I was just wondering about reading some of the comments that I asked about earlier.
At this time, you can read comments, but knowing that we do have an executive session coming up and we are being on somebody else's time, so we do want to be, I'm not stifling your voice, I'm just putting in your brain to be efficient, if you're going to.
Yeah.
So it's up to you.
Yeah, I would, just wanted to say that I got several emails like this, this week, and so I just wanted to read one as an example.
Go right ahead.
Okay. So, Dear Mayor and City Council, this is from a community member. She owns a business, Mill Street Mini Storage, which is over there by the J Street camp. We have owned Mill Street Mini Storage since the late nineties. In the last several months, we have dealt with many horrendous acts of violence, theft, vandalism, and drug dealing twenty-four hours a day. We have also feared to speak up about the encampment for a fear of retaliation. And as you know, well know, our business is a customer-based business. We have seen a significant decline in rentals and a loss of current customers...
Stop the discussion, just wake up.
...and have feared for the safety of our employees. I am in full support of closing the J Street encampment. Homelessness is not an easy issue and should not be taken lightly. I personally thank you for listening to our community and our local business owners and everyone that this encampment has impacted. Thank you for your commitment and the safety of our community.
Thank you. Anybody else have anything from the council? Indra?
I'm just going to really briefly add to Counselor Cron's. I also have received a lot of emails. We hear a lot of negative, negative when people come up, so I just want to acknowledge that I have received a lot of emails and people speaking to me, that they were happy with the J Street closure, particularly businesses that were nearby and really affected by vandalism, the drug abuse, and all of that stuff, and residents as well. So I just want to put that out there, too.
Thank you. Anybody else have any comments? If not, I'll turn it over to staff. Last call. All right, thanks, guys. Staff, have any comments for tonight? I love the head-shakies. Okay, at this time, we need to adjourn a city council meeting, so can I get a motion to adjourn city council meeting so we can go to an executive session? Joel?
I'm going to adjourn.
Do we have a second? Rick? We have a motion and a second to adjourn the city council meeting, knowing that we're going into executive session.
I just want to also state in that motion, or have that stated, that we'll be entering back into normal session, but no decisions will be made during the executive session.
I amend my, my motion to say that we're going into executive session.
I appreciate that. Thanks for the amendment.
I know a decision can be made.
Excellent. Thanks for the clarification, Joel, and we'll stick with Rick's second. Thanks for the clarification, Joel, and we'll stick with Rick's second. Thank you. Kathleen, yes or no?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Indra?
Yes.
Victoria?
Yes.
All right. City council meeting is now adjourned. We will have...